Mr. Babbitt.
Here.
Mr. Boyd.
Here.
Mrs. Johann.
I'm here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Mrs. Reagan.
Here.
Mrs. Steele.
Here.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Here. And at this time, we would invite Briarwood Student Council to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd welcome a motion to adopt the agenda for the October 3 board meeting.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Julie Steele, seconded by Brad Boyd.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mrs. Johann.
Yes.
Thank you. Recognitions and awards, Ms. Grubel.
Yeah, well, good evening, everyone. To begin our recognitions tonight, I would like to welcome to the front our Director of Community Development, Heather Schoonover, along with all of our 2024 Alumni Association Wall of Honor honorees, and also those who are here to accept this recognition on behalf of a distinguished person of honor. Each year, outstanding alumni are selected by the Olathe Public Schools Alumni Association for a Wall of Honor recognition. The purpose of this prestigious award is to recognize Olathe School District alumni and distinguished persons of honor for their lifetime achievements. Last night, the Olathe Public Schools Alumni Association recognized three exceptional alumni, including, and you can wave when I say your name, Tom Carney, who's a 1970 graduate of Olathe High School, a longtime district educator and a community leader who serves on several city and civic boards. We also recognized Carrie Lane, a 1991 graduate of Olathe South High School, who has been a district teacher, administrator, and who currently serves as the Olathe East Principal. And Johnny Moreland, a 1988 graduate of Olathe North High School and the founder and administrator of the nonprofit Starfish Project, which supports 2,000 people in need each month. The Alumni Association also recognized two distinguished persons of honor during its Wall of Honor banquet. And this year's honorees are Catherine Smith. Catherine was a district AP language teacher for 36 years. As a renowned debate and forensic coach, she achieved a six Diamond NSDA coach status. She was involved with the Olathe Civic Theater Association, and I know last night her sons were there to accept that award on her behalf. We also honored Dr. Melvin Winters, who received the Association's Distinguished Person of Honor Award. Dr. Winters served as superintendent for 23 years as the district grew from just over 4,000 students to more than 1,500 students. His awards include Educator of the Year by the American Counselor Association, and KU Educational Alumni Apple Award. And I know his daughter Melanie was going to accept the award on his behalf tonight. So please join me in a very large round of applause for these distinguished honorees. Wonderful. I'd now like to welcome to the front Olathe East students Haley France and Colt Huey, and Olathe South student Abby Van De Veer, along with the Olathe East Principal Carrie Lane, Olathe South's Principal Sean Demery, Recruiter Liaison Amy Hillman, and future Educator Academy facilitator Shelley Staples. Over the summer, these students represented Olathe on the national stage at the Educator Rising Conference. They participated in performance-based competitive events that provide aspiring educators the opportunity to demonstrate their knowledge, skills, and leadership in education. There is a blend of both individual and team events, and I am proud to say that we had students representing in both areas. Olathe East Haley France and Colt Huey were national semifinalists and took second place in the Varsity Teacher Public Service Announcement Teacher Recruitment Competition. Their session, "Techie Tools: Apps to Use in Your Classroom," featured technology tools like AI and image creating, Bitmoji classrooms, Flipgrid, Osmo, green screen, and other innovative apps that our future teachers are using to connect with students. And I believe Haley is currently in her senior placement at Scarborough Elementary School, and she may have some supporters in the audience from Scarborough. Olathe South's Abby Van De Veer competed in the JV Educators Rising Moment and took seventh place. And in this competition, students prepare a three- to four-minute speech on why they aim to pursue a career in education. And I know we have some friends in HR in the audience tonight, so it'll be jotting down names. These students are now hard at work as they gear up for the regional competition set for this November. So let's hear it for these three students. Well, Carrie, don't go too far. Tonight's your night. I know. Finally, I would like to welcome Olathe East Performing Arts educators up to the front to join their Principal Carrie Lane. And I think they might have been out in the hallway. Come on up, yeah. Earlier this fall, we had the opportunity to make a very special surprise announcement at a staff meeting where we got to share that Olathe East was named the Performing Arts High School of Excellence by the Kansas State High School Activities Association. In 2018, CASH made a commitment to annually recognize outstanding performing arts schools in the state of Kansas, and this award is a wonderful testimony to the performing arts program at Olathe East. Olathe East was selected by a committee made up of representatives from the Kansas Music Educators Association, Kansas Speech Communication Association, and Kansas Thespians. We're proud to share that Olathe East is the first school in the district to receive this honor, and one of the first Johnson County School districts to be recognized. And while all performing arts educators could not be here tonight, as I understand, several of them are opening the fall play, we wanted to publicly congratulate those of you who could join us. So thank you so much for all you do. Congratulations. Thank you. That concludes our recognitions.
Congratulations to all of you who received recognition tonight. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from Briarwood Elementary School, Mr. Casper Meyer, and some students, it appears. Welcome.
All right, good evening, everyone. Board members, Dr. Jaeger, and of course Barb, how are you, Barb? So, you know, we're definitely honored to be here tonight and brag a little bit about Briarwood Elementary and what we have going on in our building. So let me get some of the awkwardness out of the way. I know some of you might have met Andy Lass, so I couldn't get him here tonight. Additionally, you might not know this, but there was a fifth member of Motley Crue, Andy Lee, Tommy Lee's brother, and he's on a reunion tour or something like that. So he couldn't make it, but what you are stuck with is me, and I get to be the best principal of the best school on earth. And that's a moniker that we just didn't give ourselves, but that our community has started to call us. So I walked in on the first day of school with staff, and this was on the ground. I have some dads that changed the kiosk for me. This was on the kiosk. And so this is something that we've taken to heart this year and really tried to live. So let me tell you a little bit about the best school on earth. So our den, opened in 1988, there's been a lot of changes with Briarwood Elementary, but some notable additions would be a fifth-grade wing, a gymnasium, a foyer, and then some other unique aspects. We serve early childhood. We have Miss Anita, one of the best early childhood teachers in the district, 30 years at Briarwood, 33 in the district. We have a wonderful center-based resource program led by Leslie Ketchum. And then another unique aspect is we serve students on IUPs from Prince of Priest just down the street from us. There are 36 years of great tradition at Briarwood Elementary. We're getting close to going over the hill there. But one of the best parts about doing this was for me to talk with staff members that had been at Briarwood for so long and to hear the stories. You hear stories about students who are now instructional coaches in the district, teachers in the district. You get to look through all these yearbooks. You get to see teachers with hair and no longer having hair, or nicely colored hair and a different color hair now. But the tradition is there. There are great principals at Briarwood. We still have two in the district in Sean Bohan and Chris Corb, and I'm very grateful to be the current principal at Briarwood Elementary. So let me tell you a little bit about our people. Right now, we have 15 K through five teachers. We have three sections of three and three sections of two. We have some fantastic grade-level teachers that dig in every single day to support our kids. 19 additional certified staff members. For me, the best special education team that you can work with. They do creative problem-solving to serve students, to make sure all students' needs are served, and to make sure they get that valuable planned time and lunchtime. We have one of the best special staff around. They're veterans. They support our building inside and out. They're content experts, but they also go above and beyond to serve our building. If my numbers are right, over 500 years of service to Briarwood alone within our current staff, which tells you something about our staff, their love for our building, and the ability to retain quality staff at Briarwood. Some of our great other people that are a part of us are PTA, just wrapped up a great fundraiser, doing acts of kindness, and really kind of building our community up, and that was really a big pull for our PTA. Additionally, we have a group that refer to themselves as the Briar Dads, who you might see out and around Briarwood. They're pretty good at the Donuts Day. They like to give out the donuts and maybe sneak a few for themselves. But we also have some wonderful community partners in Journey Bible and Hy-Vee. And then lastly, if you were here at the board meeting last week, Jan Wise, Jerry Sap were honored with the Presidential Award for volunteering. We have some great parents that just come in and make copies, so we're really blessed with that. This year, 306 students. If any more want to come in, we'll take you. So our celebrations, academic success. Last year, in third grade, 327 median score on the cap, 27 points higher than the state average, 81% of third graders scoring in three and four on the state assessment. When you look at Briarwood's scores across the board, we're scoring above the state. And state assessment scores are really important, right? But when you look at the ins and outs and the students that don't take the state assessments, when you look at our FastBridge data, what we really see is that our students are growing each year. And when you come to Briarwood, our goal is that regardless of where you start, you get a year's worth of growth every single year. When you look at attendance, I polled this, and I think we might be down a percentage, but 93% of our students are attending school 90% of the time or more. And for me, gratitude goes out to our community for really embracing the importance of being in school. And so last year, it was about at 80%. So that's a huge shift for us. Community involvement, like I shared, we have some great community partners. Kristin Slavik, who works in this building, is doing everything she can to support us. We have a great PTA. Hy-Vee does whatever they can. And additionally, to support our care closet, we had 1889 Pizza and Polatana, we had Silverleaf Lawn and Landscaping providing some valuable donations to us. Another big celebration for us was our Briarwood Care Closet that opened up last year. This was a small idea by some third-grade teachers that gained some traction, and thanks to Olathe Public Schools Foundation and Donors Choose and matching that, we were able to open it up. It started small, but it's really morphed into what this picture is you see here. This is for any student in Briarwood, any family in Briarwood. You might need snacks for the whole week. You might need snack for just that day. If you need it, it's there for you. If families have any needs, they can reach out to us. But the coolest thing about this is the fact that students have bought in. It's really created a culture of caring within our students, within our staff, and so that's a huge celebration for us. The other thing that is probably one of the coolest things about Briarwood is retention of staff. It's really easy for the principal when you don't have to hire teachers every year, and so they make my job really easy because they stick around. So I said over 500 years of service. Some notable ones, 34 years in the district, 33 years at Briarwood Elementary, and she also made sure to say she did her student teaching there, Tina Montgomery. We have 29 and 29, Corey Martins, 31 and 30, Melissa Sullivan. We have 33 and 30, Anita Pearson, people that have been in our building for 30 years. We have 12 staff members that have been at Briarwood for over 20 years, and we have 20 staff members who have been at Briarwood over 10 years. So when we talk about the shift in education and the need to keep good people around, Briarwood's a case study and a building to look at that keeps building around. So that picture right there, Corey Martins, I think he's out here somewhere. There he is. You look a little different, Corey. But I don't know if Mr. Keiger, Mr. Plang, you want to hear this, but before he retires, we're getting that bug back into the building, so we need to figure out how to make that happen. But celebration, keeping staff members around, and they're the best of the best. So our why. We really strive to be that safe, inclusive environment. We want to support the growth of the whole child, and we want them to be a productive citizen. But our why is in these faces right here. And so I challenge the fifth graders to share what it means to be their Briarwood best. I challenge them not to sneak away from the microphone. But I have two fifth graders here who also happen to be Briarwood students from kindergarten up through fifth grade. And so they're going to share a little bit with you what it means to be their Briarwood best, and when they leave our doors, what it's meant to be a Briarwood Bear. So Haley, would you like to come forward? Okay, you got this, girl.
Hello, my name is Haley Vanderhorse, and I am a fifth grader at Briarwood. To me, being my Briarwood best is different in every room. For example, in the hallways, it means being quiet and walking. Being your Briarwood best means actually doing your best. Being at Briarwood is everything, because I've met most of my friends here. They have helped me learn. Briarwood is not a place, it's a kind of people. No matter where we are, we are Briarwood.
Hello, my name is Addie Hamontree, and I'm going to say, what does it mean to be a Briarwood Bear, you may ask? It means you're always following the eight keys of excellence, even when no one's watching. It's just what we do. It means you make good choices all of the time, and you are doing them like no one's asking you to do them. You are always being kind to everybody, even if it's someone you're not friends with. What does it mean to be your Briarwood best, you might ask? It means if a test is coming up, and you need to study, and your class is going over it together, and you're messing around with a friend, high chances are you're not going to get the best grade. So it's very important to pay attention, even when the teacher isn't looking. Yes, and yeah, you will make mistakes in life, and that's okay. You can always improve on them. Our staff and teachers are so amazing. They help us learn and grow and improve each and every day. And can't forget the best principal, Mr. Casper Meyer. He's so caring and kind, and he's always cheering people on. Briarwood has been the only elementary school that I've been to, from kindergarten all the way to fifth grade. I've been learning about the eight keys, and that has been the best part of Briarwood. And also, all of the people, teachers, and staff, and friends that I've made along this way, they've always been so fun and nice. One of the other things that I enjoy is all of the fundraisers that we do, like Apex, Raise Crease, and more. I love Briarwood.
I probably could have had them do the whole thing. I said they'd do much better than I would do. So I think the last thing that I want to do is embarrass people, and they're going to be angry, but the people that are at Briarwood that work here, please stand up. And before Mr. Sieg gets a little emotional, I'll leave it there. Thank you, guys, for letting me share a little bit about the best school on earth. Have a good evening.
Before you step away, there might be some questions, Mr. Sieg.
Okay. I was hoping I could sneak out. We might be going somewhere, but yes, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Board, did you have any questions or comments? Mr. Babbitt.
So my question's about the bug. Who's going to drive it? Is it going to be one of the fifth graders?
Well, I think if I can keep Corey around a little bit longer, he'll drive it for us. We won't let any kids get on the top of it, but maybe a few in it if they're buckled up. Okay.
Board, any other comments or questions? Mr. Sieg, thank you, and Briarwood staff and students, thank you for being here and sharing your story tonight.
Thank you, yes.
Our next presentation is our Human Resources Division. Dr. Sieg, Mr. Howe, Dr. Donovan.
Well, good evening. We are happy to be here tonight to share a little bit of information with all of you regarding our 2024-2025 rookie class, or recruitment class, if you will. Obviously, a key job in our world of human resources is to recruit the very best staff members and educators to be in front of our kids every day, and that is no small feat and takes a true team effort. But that team effort is led by these two people standing next to me. And so I'm proud to be here tonight with Dr. Kathy Donovan, who is our Director of Elementary Human Resources, and Mr. Justin Howe, who is our Director of Secondary Human Resources. And they're going to share some insights with you regarding the recruitment, kind of fruits of our labor, if you will, that we were able to reap this year, and the work that they are already leading for our '25 recruitment class. I will hand it over to Mr. Howe.
Thank you. Well, it's tough to follow that act, "Human Resources," right after that. No, but that is a great example of our why right there, the Briarwood Bears. We'd like to start tonight with talking a little bit about where 2023-2024 left off. As the year ended, not uncommon, we had some folks depart our district for various reasons. Here's some stat lines. We had 64 retirements, 136 resignations, and 17 leave of absences. Those numbers may seem large, but you have to remember, as the second-largest district in the state of Kansas with over 56 instructional buildings, it's actually pretty natural on an annual basis to have numbers right around those pieces. It's a daunting task, but one that we're up for and look forward to every single year. So more importantly, let's talk about how we attack those openings and what it looks like so far this year for '24-'25. And to do that, we'll start with elementary. I'd like Dr. Donovan to come up and talk a little bit. Oh, sorry about that. Breaking down reasons for departure just a little bit as well. So, Dr. Donovan.
Good evening. I wanted to just, Justin kind of shared with you a little bit about what the staffing that we have, how the types of reasons people leave. So I'm going to break that down a little bit for you. As he mentioned, retirement is a big group every year, and it's becoming more and more. Out of that group that left, 36% were retirements. And then the next largest group is they leave for family, personal reasons, and that's 28%. If you take those two groups together, that's about, that's 64%, over half of the reasons. The family and personal falls a little bit into that leave of absence, where Olathe allows our certified staff to take a leave of absence for one to two years if they plan to, if they have hopes of returning. A lot of those are teachers that have young families, young children, and their intent is to return after a year or two at home with their students. The next area is leaving education for another profession, and you can see that is 16%. Unfortunately, that nationwide, that is increasing across the nation. We've seen that increase a little bit since COVID. So that's an area where we're trying to promote education and work on that retention piece. The next area, you'll see 12%. Some of our staff have accepted positions in other Kansas school districts. Now, that's a wide range. It's Kansas, it's not, doesn't mean just Johnson County. I know for a fact we've had a couple people went, moved back to Wichita, that's their home. They wanted to be back closer to family. We have some staff who maybe they live in Lawrence, and they, with gas prices, that became a challenge, so they chose to stay there. And then relocation out of state. Every year, we have some who espouse relocation, or they decide to relocate to a state, or maybe it's someone that we hired from another state, and they're wanting to return. And then some people don't necessarily tell us why they're leaving, so that covers everyone else. Now I'm going to give you a breakdown of just kind of the elementary hiring that we had this year. For general education, we had a total of 77 new teachers this year. I broke those down for you a little bit. 37 of those 77 are brand-new to the teaching profession. 40 we hired have some experience. Now, that's a wide range. One, two, can be up to 20, 25 years of experience. So as you can see, it's really pretty even, evenly distributed. We have some brand-new, but we also have some with experience. For special education, we had a total of 33. Again, 14 new to the profession, 19 came with some experience. So again, kind of evenly distributed. of evenly distributed. And then the last one, just kind of to give you an idea what goes on in our office, we processed 114 internal transfers. And what that means, like at the elementary school, those, those children coming through, you know, every grade level, we have to make some adjustments. So it could, part of those 114 might be a teacher just changing grade levels within a building. But all of that takes some processing from our office. Or we have some teachers, they have completed their library media, or their counselor endorsement, so they have, move on to an opportunity in the district. Justin's now going to share a little bit of the breakdown of the secondary new staff.
At middle schools, we had 19 middle school hires with nine in special education, high school, 45 new hires, and 12 special education, and we processed 50 internal secondary transfers. So just like Dr. Donovan said, it mirrors elementary for all the same reasons that we would process an internal transfer and things of that nature. But what's really exciting is our continued effort beyond that, because we're not done. And so when we look at our 25-26 recruitment efforts, we're really proud, and we broke it into two categories. One are the college and university events. So right now, we have 19 confirmed events, and we're still waiting on some spring confirmations. So we'll probably closer to 26 when it's all said and done. That includes three HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities. That's Harastow, Jefferson, and Langston. And then that territory is seven different states. And it's pretty fun. In Olathe, you know, when you go to Lawrence, when you go to Emporia, they know how to say "Olathe." So that's good. But when you go to Oklahoma, when you go to Arkansas, when you're going to parts of Iowa, and they look at and they say "Olathe," no, but let's help you out. And by the time they're done, and we've signed them up for interviews, and they want to know more, and we're hiring these folks, that's a true victory in itself. And it's, it's a lot of fun to do those things. And then we have four district events just this fall. And that is something that we've upped our game on. So we've done a fall interview night for the last few years, which is going anywhere 60 to 80 people walk through our door and interview. And so far, we've got 33 signed up for October 22. And we'll, traditionally, we see that trend go up, so we are expecting more. We just interviewed 27 student teachers Tuesday in this building, and we've still got two more events after that. One targeted specifically at recruiting events from colleges and universities, when we get those great resumes. Some of those events are fairs, and you don't have a time to talk with those. But you just, in the informal conversation, are blown away by the person. You look at their resume. Now, we have an event tiered specifically for them, that they can Teams in, Zoom in, or come in person. And then we also have an event right now where we're collecting applications for 25-26 hard-to-fill positions, which are things like foreign language, special education, sciences, maths, things like that. And we're already getting applications for that in December. And then we'll probably replicate two of those events in the spring, one for student teachers again, and then a spring interview night as well. So we're very, very excited about our collective efforts to recruit, and go out and get the best and brightest for, from the Briarwood Bears to the Olathe East Hawks. We'll go get champions for, for kids. So with that, I'd like to turn it over and have any questions?
Board, any questions? That was an effective presentation. No questions. I have a question. I'm just curious. I know we have, I don't know how many total student teachers, but you talked about interviewing 27. I'm curious if the student teachers are teaching in those content areas that are hard to fill, if there's an alignment there.
That's a, that's a great question. So a little bit, we're just shy of about 100 student teachers this fall, and some of the universities, because this is the first time we've had that event housed at the Ed Center. So some of them had classes that conflicted. So we were happy to say, we've got you. We've got fall interview night, so you can go to that. We've got two more events, or we'll have the building principal screen them. So we have a plan to get, our goal is 100% of our student teachers screened and interviewed this fall. We also work with Dr. Ann Addison and her group to get the breakdown of all the student teachers, their cooperating teachers, their content they're in, and then we feed that to the principals that have hard-to-fill positions now, so that they can start working with either the building principal or cooperating teacher. And we like to have a early recruiting just for those as well. So we absolutely target, and we absolutely do have hard-to-fill positions in our student teaching ranks, from science to math to foreign language to special education. We're excited.
I just had a question. I'm guessing some of the data from the beginning of the presentation comes from exit interviews, when we ask, why are you, are you leaving our, our district? I'm wondering, do we conduct state interviews? I've been reading a little bit about that and the power of state interviews, and I'm wondering if that's something we do. You know, it's a trust builder. It can lead to great conversations and a pipeline of information at HR, as well as, you know, just kind of that conversations that don't maybe naturally happen unless we seek them out. Is that something we're doing?
We have talked about that. This year, I know they're doing, that you're helping with some of those conversations at the schools. So we thought that would be one level of that. But we do have plans to start doing that in the future. We do. One thing I wanted to mention real quick, too, out of the 27 that we interviewed on Tuesday, two of those are from our own, hire our own program. One is secondary math, one is elementary. So we're excited that we're starting to see some of the reaping of that program as well. And then we should have two more in the spring.
Yeah, I'm still getting used to the new system, you know. Well, this work is amazing. I, you know, and most of you know, I'm a former educator myself. I'm curious what the policy in Kansas is for out-of-state student teachers. I went to the University of Nebraska, and I student-taught in Arlington, Virginia, and then I ended up getting a job here in Johnson County. So, you know, it just, I know we have a lot of kids who go away to college, but they still have that idea that they want to come back. So I don't know if it's even possible to have kids who don't go to university in Kansas come back and student teach here as a way to find another avenue.
Absolutely. And that's, again, we're Dr. Ann Addison's team. She partners with our colleges and universities for student teaching opportunities, which is why our seven-state network that we go to. Part of that question we get all the time is, do you have student teaching opportunities? Absolutely. We absolutely partner with several universities, from Arkansas to Iowa State, and, you know, everywhere in between. So short answer is yes, and we love it.
That, and that's wonderful. And this is the, this is the heavy lifting. Do you feel like, I know things have been difficult in the last few years with recruiting into education. These numbers seem very encouraging to me. Have you seen any sort of shift in momentum? Because I feel very encouraged in looking at this data.
Good. That is a great question. In fact, yes, we have. So we started the year at Washburn. That was our first recruiting event of the season. And they even said, our numbers for future education in the program have gone from 45 to 80. And so it was a fantastic event, and we felt that, and we see that as well. So we see more people come through our doors, especially post-COVID. That slowed things down. The recruiting event went more virtual, if you will, which is, it's a little bit more challenging to recruit that way. But now we're back to in-person almost every single place we go. And we have seen a lot more traffic at our, our table. We have more interviews signed up. And that's what allowed us to do more events in our own district, which really gets the people through our doors to see our beautiful facilities and great people.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to add a couple of things. The first one is thanks to our HR team for the work that they do. Thanks to our Learning Services team, Dr. Ann Addison. You know, over the last number of years, just the overall effort in terms of recruiting staff has changed immensely. Those of you that have been on the board for a little while know that just a couple of years in the fall, we had fewer than 50 student teachers, which is a small number for a district the size of Olathe. So to be back where we are now is really, really representative of a lot of work from our staff internally. But I have to tell you, it's also a lot of work from our other staff in the district, regardless of the position they hold, because the reputation is that people want to be here. And that also happens with the community that supports our schools, and a community that supports our educators and what have you. And, you know, if you look at the statistic information nationally, there are still fewer and fewer people going into education every year. But, you know, I always like to think that we're a responsive system and a proactive system. And there were so many things during the pandemic that we couldn't be proactive with, just because we'd never been there before. But I'm so proud of how quickly our system responded, changed the way we did things, created really tight relationships with universities for student teachers, not just hiring teachers. Because the reality is, if someone's student teaching in our district, and they are champion, to use Justin's word, the quicker we can get them in and hire them to be in front of our kids. And so there really has been a substantial change, just in terms of our practice. But I don't want to underscore the importance of our own staff sharing the positive things about Olathe, and our community embracing the strong public education that we offer. Those are really important pieces, too.
You thought we didn't have any questions, right? So I think, I got the numbers, but I was curious of the overall, and remind me, the overall amount of licensed staff we have and the percentage of turnover or leaving every single year, and how does that compare to our neighboring districts, if you have that information?
Yeah. It's a great question. So overall, we've got about, we're just shy of 5,000 staff overall, uncertified and classified. So when you look at the total number that left, it's 219. So it's a pretty small percentage overall. We're very competitive with our neighboring districts. I, in fact, once a month, try to have a PLC with the counterparts that hold my position, and we absolutely play those cards. And sometimes they win, sometimes we win, most of the time we win. And so, but it's fun, and I cherish them. And we steal ideas, and we make each other better, because we want education to be better overall. Our numbers are right in line with exactly where they are, within one or two of the total vacancy and openings. Yep, it's a great question.
I would just add briefly, I'm sorry, this is exciting stuff to talk about. But one of the things that I would add is, you know, there was a philosophy for a long time, I think, where school districts, specifically in Johnson County, competed with one another, and we still do on the football field, and winning awards for fine arts and things like that. But I would say there's really a mindset among our districts that if we can keep people in education, if it's somebody going from Olathe to Shawnee Mission, Olathe to Soto, whatever the case may be, that that's good for Kansas kids. And that's one of the things I've really seen a shift in in the last number of years, is really that collective ownership for our county as a whole, that, you know, certainly, we're sad if we lose somebody from Olathe, but if they stay in education, and they're in front of kids in our county doing good work every day, it's still really a win for all of us. And that's something that I think has really shifted over the last number of years.
So we have about 2,600 certified staff specifically. So it's under 10% for turnover, which, when you look historically, even at our data, is pretty well in line, which is also something that I think is important to kind of keep our eye on as well. And I would just also add to that, that, you know, as Dr. Jaeger mentioned, you know, having great educators in front of our kids is a primary focus for us. But those people are also the ones that, that are cooperating teachers for the student teachers. And so when they come and have a great experience, and they see this incredible teacher they're learning under, they want, they want to be in the same place. And so we have to give huge thanks to Dr. Ann Addison, but then also all of those teachers that serve as cooperating teachers, because it's another thing to do, and we know that. But the difference they're making is huge on their, on the profession and on our kids. And you'll see, even in our HR report this evening, again, some of the immediate rewards we're reaping from that as well, in terms of being able to identify really outstanding student teachers that are with us right now in our really hard-to-fill positions. And it's really exciting to see that kind of ball continue to keep rolling.
Maybe we should stop talking, so we don't have more questions.
I'm just sitting here thinking, and there's so much that our district is doing in this, this area. And I so appreciate Dr. Sieg talking about cooperating teachers. And our school cultures and climate are really what sell people on coming here, and especially if they've student-taught here. So such an important thing to mention. Also, not tonight, because we don't have enough time, but I do think we should probably also, at some point, have Amy Hellman show the work that she's doing. And I knew she would be excited about that. But, but the reality is, is it's something very innovative and different for our system that nobody else is doing, really. And so for her to kind of share what we're doing to try to inspire people to be educators, I think would be great information as well.
And Amy will be a one, one-lady show.
That's for certain. That's for certain. Thank you. Any more questions? Dr. Jaeger? Thanks to the three of you, and for all of the staff in the HR division who take care of this and make Olathe great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then a very quick ending story. Amy and I actually got to go recruit at Langston University last, last week, and Amy can recruit. And, but what was really special was, a few kids came up and said, we came here specifically for you. And that's our third year, and we've really started to reap the benefits of going down and investing. And Olathe and the educators, that's, that's our reputation. That's our recruitment, the great work they do. So it was a lot of fun, but it's worth it. Definitely for Amy, not for me. No. Amy's dancing, and she's, yeah, no, not for me.
Mr. Babbitt, did you have something else, or was that? Okay. Ms. Steele?
At each regular meeting of the Board of Education, we reserve limited time for individuals to address the board. We ask that your comments be germane, that is related to the business that this board effectuates. Noncompliance may result in the president interrupting to redirect. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. And our board clerk will monitor the time, and the president will notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the board and not the guests or staff. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personnel complaints involving individual staff members or students. Audience disruption is also not permitted. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name, city and state, and your relationship to the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. Our first speaker this evening is Melissa Wagner.
My name is Melissa Wagner. I live in Olathe, and my son is in kindergarten at Arbor Creek Elementary in the autism room. I am here today to respectfully request a fence be installed at the playground at Arbor Creek. Not fence is not only a massive safety concern, but I strongly feel that our neurodivergent students are being denied FAP. There are amazing benefits that recess gives children, but when we have to keep kids at an arm's length of an adult because the district refuses to install a fence, they're not allowing the students to reap the physical and mental benefits of recess. Recession is supposed to be a break from adult direction, and an opportunity for students to safely meet their physical needs, which often includes running. If you are not aware, a very common trait of autism is eloping and having no sense of fear or danger. According to the National Autism Association, nearly half of wandering incidents occur under non-parent supervision. Nearly one-third of wandering incidents occurred from a school setting, and more than one-third of children with autism who wander or elope are never or rarely able to communicate their name, address, or phone number. In the case the board is not aware, there is a pond and a large waterway two blocks from Arbor Creek. Related to this, the leading cause of death for autistic children is drowning. Just recently, in September of this year, an eight-year-old boy in South Carolina eloped from the school playground and drowned in nearby pond. I'm fully aware that a fence has been requested over the past two years from parents and staff members. When I spoke to a former staff member at Arbor Creek, I was told that at the community board meeting last fall, the school was supposed to be getting bids for a fence. However, the fence never came, and so this staff member ended up leaving the district. I emailed the district operations team recently requesting for a fence to be installed as soon as possible, and I received this response, and I quote, "The district believes our solution lies within the supervision of students during entry, dismissal, recess, and other outdoor events. The safety of our students is a top priority, and our dialogue continues to focus on supervision," end quote. My son has eloped multiple times while at recess. He has a par while at recess, but my stunt, my son has still been able to elope even while under supervision. Autistic learners are sensory seekers. Repetitive movements such as pacing and running is a way for their nervous system to regulate. Fencing would allow autistic students to access all aspects of the playground. Pares should be able to support should be able to support neurotypical peers with interacting with neurodivergent peers instead of blocking them for fear of elopement. Fencing will support staff to allow all students to access recess with their gen ed class. Fencing would also create an opportunity for an AAC board to be placed outside and enable autistic students to communicate their needs and play and increase interaction with peers. A fence provides an opportunity for our community to take action and help autistic learners know we value their safety and that they belong on the playground, too. This unstructured time with non-disabled peers is an essential time in their day. Please seriously consider installing a fence at Arbor Creek, and please help keep our kids safe. Thank you for your time and for your consideration."
Thank you. Megan Bricks.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Megan Bricks. I reside in DeSoto, Kansas, and I'm the proud elementary music teacher at Forest View Elementary School. As we are nearing the end of first quarter, I've been taking mental note of things that I'm seeing and hearing as I walk around my building and other buildings across our district. One of the skills I see our elementary students learning about and utilizing is the strategy of taking notice and wonder. As I've seen and heard our students making statements about something they noticed within wit and wisdom, or I hear them telling their peers about something they wonder about the specific topic, I begin to utilize that language both in my professional and personal life. Throughout my music lessons, I'm finding opportunities to strengthen and deepen my students' skills related to notice and wonder to further stretch their thinking. The same goes for what I notice day in and day out within my building and the other buildings across our district. Tonight, I want to share with you some things that I have noticed, but please know that this is not an exhaustive list. I noticed our secretarial assistant entering check-in, check-out data into Swiss, our PBIS data system. I noticed our instructional aide ensuring that she was passing out our PBIS incentives, which at Forest View, they're called Fox Cards, to students who are showing the expected behaviors in the lunchroom. I noticed the first-grade teachers teaching about living and non-living things in preparation for their field trip to the zoo tomorrow. I noticed a fourth-grade student supporting his first-grade buddy in the tricky transition from the classroom to the specials area. I noticed our chief technology officer supporting educators who needed further assistance with Duo. I noticed our daytime custodian making connections with our students during the book fair, and she jumped in immediately to assist with the influx of students one morning when the line was extremely, extremely long. I noticed a team of classroom teachers working together to plan an autumn day of activities for their students to engage with. I noticed an evening custodian substitute who took wonderful care of our building and asked us as we were leaving if there was anything specific they needed us to do. I noticed my school secretary working on inputting busing requests for our field trips. I noticed a para educator who has gone above and beyond when providing a break for a student at the end of the day with activities geared towards the student's interests and learning about circuits as a first grader. I noticed one of our school aides providing support with a small group of students. I noticed our kindergarten team working hard to put their heads together to find creative ways to engage our families in conversations about, with their children at home, about how their day went each day. I noticed our superintendent hosting this year's Superintendent's Educator Advisory Committee to allow educators to share their open and honest thoughts. I noticed our special education resource educators in my building, meeting with their para educators in the mornings before students arrive in the classrooms to best prepare and support them in their daily duties. I noticed one of our food service providers in my building who is building relationships with our students and making connections with them throughout the lunchtime. Once they were able to serve the food, they were wandering throughout the cafeteria to further engage in conversations to learn more about our students. Every day, every minute, every second, there are truly outstanding things occurring within our school district. On our hard days, sometimes it might be hard to remember those things. We need to remind ourselves to look around us at our school family, our colleagues who are there supporting us no matter what. I'm proud of our school district. I'm proud to work here. I'm proud to have student taught here. I'm proud to have chosen this district, and I hope that we are always able to celebrate and recognize the hard work of our school district employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bricks. Nick Crayley.
Hello. I know most of you, and those of you that I don't know, I'm going to be getting to know pretty soon, and that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. The main reason I'm here initially was to thank you for the adoption of the Student Personal Electronic Device Policy. I'm very happy to see that you guys did that. I know it took a lot on your parts. I know that there are some people that are frustrated with it. It was really courageous. Teachers around the district are very happy to have something. And you know what? We're just going to have, we're just going to keep moving forward because there is still room to grow, and I dream of a day when it is not an issue in any classroom at all. The other reason I'm here is to thank you guys and to thank the members of senior leadership team for their efforts in the epic sessions that are going on at all the buildings. That's an enormous lift, and I don't know that a lot of people understand how much hard work has been going into that and how dedicated it has taken from the seven of you, as well as the people that work at the Ed Center to get out to those buildings. And I know the teachers appreciate it, and those that don't yet will eventually. For those of you that don't know, I work in the HOPE program over at Mill Creek Campus, where I work with kids who have been expelled from their middle and high schools. I love my job. I was just talking to Dr. Jaeger yesterday about how I would like to continue to do this until I retire. It is a perfect fit for me, the students that are there, our students that, quite frankly, a lot of other teachers are happy to see leave, and I'm happy to see arrive. I love Mill Creek. The support that Olathe gives to alternative education is unparalleled, honestly, I think possibly in the country. Please keep doing that. It is vital and extremely important. I want to thank Dr. Jaeger, along with the board. I also want to thank Clint Albers, Jim McMullin, Matt Johnson. I think the new guy that does the hearings is John Johnson, but I don't remember because I only see it in email. But all of those people, Dr. Waters, and then Judy Martin and Jeanette Tolman, for all the work that has gone into helping us have a program where kids can go even if they've been expelled during the day, that's very important. I also really want to let you know that if you haven't met him, my principal, Seth Sweeterman, is one of the most amazing human beings you will ever meet in your entire life. Please, if you haven't, come spend some time with him. Our assistant principal, Dr. Dandridge, we're extremely lucky to have them. They are phenomenal. When I came to Olathe, I didn't have any kind of, any ounce of respect for principals or administrators at all. COVID made that worse, and I got to tell you that working with Seth, working with Dr. Jaeger, working here and seeing the work you guys have been doing has really built that back up from zero, and I love it. And what we're doing here this year couldn't be done in other districts. And so I'm going to leave with one other thing. We're all going to be going out. We're going to be going on Wednesdays. We're going to be going to schools. I'm so excited. I've already had such a good time with it. I'm here because I'm thanking you because I know that you guys have done a lot of hard work. I know that the senior leadership team has done a lot of hard work. I even know that the principals have done a lot of hard work. So I'm really glad that we're going to be getting into those buildings and hearing from people. In my job, different than other jobs, a lot of teachers are called on to love students who have been victimized. But what I have learned to do in the last six years is to love students who have done serious harm to others. And that's not easy, and it's not for everyone, and I wouldn't ask it for everyone. But in the way that I'm up here thanking you, and I'm sure I will get to tell you thank you lots more, I also want you to keep in mind that there will be people that have no thanks to give when you are out in those buildings. But their words have meaning and they have importance just in the same way that mine do. And I know, because I think that I know your hearts, that you will remember that. So with that, I'm so proud to be in this district. I'm so happy to come to work every single day, knowing that in a profession that is having a retention crisis, that is having a recruitment crisis, I get up and I get to do something that I love with people that I love and with students that I love, and you guys all have helped create that. I'm so thankful for it, and I hope that everyone has a wonderful evening. And that was a weird way to end, but I'm going to go sit down. All right, thank you. I also want to thank Mr. Humphries, because I'm sure everybody was really mad when the internet wasn't working, but I know that he was working hard to fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Crayley, and thanks to the ONEA Executive Board for their participation in these dialogues as well. Thank you. Patty Lanter. And Ms. Lanter, when you introduce yourself, would you also indicate your topic that was enlisted tonight? Thank you.
Sure. Sorry, I'm like, where's the microphone? Okay. Yeah, it's cause and effect is my topic. I'm Patty. Winston Churchill said, "I no longer listen to what people say, I just watch what they do. Behavior never lies." Regarding board and board candidates, both local and state, do they say they support public education while making decisions that lower the bar for all or that cause students and teachers to not come to school, or do the students leave altogether? Do they claim belonging for all while driving wedges between children through placards portraying belonging for some? Our honors classes at all levels ask to read books from a selected list when money are written at lower reading levels using poor grammar and sentence structure. It is a lot to expect of a child to learn how to structure sentences and speak properly while reading books that are full of slang, swearing, drug culture, et cetera. What is to be gained academically from something like this? Nothing. They are intended to infuse ideology into children or to inspire activist behavior. Do the board selectee candidates say that we aren't teaching that while sending teachers and pares to training on how to teach using that? Schools have often gotten, have gotten so far off track in educating children, the stated goals in our local schools do not match what is actually happening for our children. Data from KSDE shows that as more money is added in support of the system, and the mantra is, "Support our public schools" rather than to improve education for children, achievement goes down. Yes, even Olathe. Just using ACT alone as a metric, as spending per student has gone up, ACT results have gone down each year in the district over the past nine years. This is even though the test has changed several times and has become less demanding and will be even less so starting in the spring, where science will become optional. Though not all children would ideally be taking the ACT, they are encouraged to do so. It likely does not do much for their self-esteem to be pushed to take a test and fall on their face. And no, a voucher system will not help any child in the long run, but vouchers would rather grow the public system that wants to control all schools, even home schools. Olathe teachers are not happy with excessive pay increases at the upper tiers of administration, while they and the actual staff that need the increases don't get them. And they are told for the staff, "We don't know why you don't feel respected." Perhaps the many hundreds of thousands given to the top tier show disrespect and inequity. The board can choose whether to approve or deny such inequitable distributions that they are always approved. It's curious why we have staffing retention issues. Teachers are scared to speak up, but yet still keep voting for the same types of people funded by the same agencies that create the policies that hurt and divide children. This week, there was a site council meeting to gather ideas on how to get kids back into school that are not attending. The true root cause might be helpful, not of the households, since it is the parent's business, but rather of why the system might not be appealing to kids and families. Perhaps parents do not want new age spirituality of Castle replacing their own value system. Many parents have talked about listening to what the district wanted and are keeping their kids out of school for the slightest sniffle or headache. Many kids are bullied. Some see through the disconnect of being told not to believe what they see and hear in their own schools and in their lessons, but rather it isn't happening. Is it any wonder that kids are staying home? News you may not have heard, George Soros is buying up 200-plus U.S. radio stations with the FCC help in fast-tracking it through before the election. John Kerry, whose family owns Forbes magazine, and also, he's also former Secretary of State, and WEF and UN influencers, said this week that you need to curb the entities of independent news that are, in order to build consensus around any issue. It is really hard to govern today. There are no referees like we used to have to determine what the facts are. We need a discussion on how to curb those. If people don't use alternate media sources, the First Amendment is a major block to hammering it out of existence. What we need is to win the right to govern. Democracies have not proven they can move fast enough or big enough to manage the challenges we've been facing. Those are just two representatives that yearn to control people like they have in the past, and through their bot media, they will do only more. As adults, we need to do better for children by voting for those that actually care about children rather than a political career or political family. I also reject those that want to grow the public education budget regardless of the negative impact on children and taxpayers. The latest shiny thing is sometimes, many times, fool's gold. Do better, vote for kids, not systems. It is foolish to expect any candidate that is backed by those that call themselves labor unions but use political spending.
Thank you, Ms. Lanter.
Thank you.
For the next item, action consent, I would welcome a motion for items 6.01 to 6.13.
I move to approve action consent agenda items 6.01 through 6.13 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Mr. Kuhn.
Mrs. Johan.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Dr. Yerkevich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes. Sorry.
Motion passes 7-0. The next section, action items. There are a couple. We're going to ask some senior leadership team to perhaps comment on before we vote on that section. Dr. Jaeger, Mr. Pallangi, is that correct? 7.05, construction management proposals.
Good evening. Speaking on behalf of what's being presented tonight for our construction management proposals for our upcoming projects that we have, so associated with the bond issue and approved by the community, was renovations at our high schools and their media centers, along with various other projects associated with our aging facilities program. Wanted to take advantage of having the same contractors on site at one time for those. And then also was renovations for our media center, or middle school auditorium renovations, and again, adding in additional projects that were associated with our aging facility projects with them as well. So tonight, what we want to present to you is our recommendation for construction management services for that project. It's a two-summer project, so we're going to be starting here in the fourth quarter at our media centers at our high schools. We'll be going through summer break, and then again, kind of doing the same exact same thing for the summer of 2026. So we split the project up. We've got two high schools that we're going to be doing this year, which will be Olathe North and Olathe South for our media center renovations, and then our auditorium upgrades will be at Indian Trail, Frontier Trail, Pioneer Trail, and Oregon Trail. And construction management services has a wide variety of scopes of services that they're going to provide us. So they do project estimates for us to make sure that we're within budget. They do a lot of construction coordination as well with our architects that are on board. They are also in charge of bidding the project as well, reviewing those bids in coordination with us, making recommendations that we'll present to you later on in the winter. So right now, we have not bid the project. This is just for construction management services. They'll also establish and maintain the construction schedule on the project. So this is, it's a pretty tight schedule and over a lot of different areas as well. Full-time site administration. So as mentioned before, we're going to be at six locations this summer, and six in 2026. And then also, they help assist the district after the construction project is done during that 11-month warranty period. So if we have things that come up, we work with the construction management team and in turn, the contractors on the project to make sure that things get fixed during that time. So that is a little bit of a summary of what we're being presented tonight, and would entertain any questions associated with that.
Board, any questions? Ms. Reagan.
I just was curious, like, this, this project covers so many different schools and all of that, and the... of that, and the roofing project covers a lot of different schools too, but I noticed, like, each of those was individual roofing companies as opposed to just one, whereas we're, you know, doing one big construction management. I just was curious about kind of the difference there. Sorry to spring the question on.
No, that's okay. The roofing bids that we're presenting tonight are actual bids. So, we are securing a contract with a contractor for those at each location. So, construction management service is with a construction management firm, which is basically professional services to help assist the district in bidding the projects, working during construction, and then actually coordinating with the construction schedule, and they help maintain.
So, there may be other contract, there may be a variety, there will be, it sounds like, a variety of contractors actually doing the work, so.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Here later on in the winter, we're going to bid the projects out and present those to you, and those will be all the contractors that are associated with that project.
Thank you for clearing that up.
You're welcome.
Dr. Yager.
I was just going to add two things. One, thank you, Travis, for all of your work on this bond. It is kind of exciting that we're, this is kind of the last big project, I think, that is coming out of the '22 bond, so thank you for your leadership on that. The other thing that I just want to be really clear about, so this is construction management, so then it will go out to bid, and that's where contractors then would come in and bid on the jobs to, and that's what would come back to the board at that time, correct?
That's correct. We have a public bidding process that we adhere to for all the contractors to bid on the various scopes of work on the project, ranging from roofing to casework to painting and everything else that we need for the project.
Mr. Babbitt.
Hey, Travis. And excuse me if I'm using, this terminology is new to me. Is this construction management at risk or is this construction management agency?
This is construction management as an agent.
And can you give a very brief overview of the difference between that and why we choose agent versus construction management at risk?
Sure. So, construction management as agent, they're basically the representative of the school district, and they work in conjunction with myself and our staff to help manage the project. Construction management at risk, there's just one contract on the whole entire project. Where construction management as agent, the district holds the contract with each individual contractor on the project. So, we have a lot more autonomy and basically oversight of the projects with having that contract with each individual contractor in lieu of just one, which would be, for example, a construction management firm as well. And then they would hold contracts with the individual contractors. So, for us, it's, we have the staff to do that onsite and within the district, so we utilize that approach. There's some other districts that do construction management at risk, and there's various ways to actually go about that, that the state of Kansas has authorized to, for them to submit their overall bid numbers, and then it gets reviewed by the state, and then it comes back to us based off their recommendations, where us, we hold that authority to bid out the projects to each individual contractors.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Pallangi, I don't recognize this construction management firm. Seems to be a new one. Can you talk a little bit about the process to select this firm?
Sure. So, we sent out our RFP for services on this project to four local construction management firms that we've done business with in the past. So, all four have done projects for the district, and the construction management firm that we're recommending tonight, Navholz Construction, have done projects for us in the district. There are a firm that is over in Lenexa, so they're just right on the border of the district, which helps us out because they'll be able to do operations and manage the project out of their office as well, and then be able to disperse to the other buildings as we go through. They have a wide breadth of experience in the metro and in the region as well, and so we selected them based off their qualifications for doing similar projects that we have and felt confident that they could do the job.
Thank you. Board, any other questions? Thank you. The other item, the enterprise vehicle leasing, I think Mr. Hutchison is going to share a little information about that.
Yes, good evening. We entered into this agreement with enterprise leasing almost a decade ago, actually, and several other districts in the area have joined the program as well. We have over 100 vehicles, whether that's vehicles to transport students, like smaller teams to events, to obviously very large maintenance fleet as well, and very susceptible to large purchases where you suddenly get to year 10 and you just can't get the truck to go any further. So, now, there's this inconsistency. Some years, it would be $1 million worth of vehicles, another year, it'd be $200,000 worth of purchases. What we discovered through this program is there's a sweet spot for every vehicle on when you should trade it in and maximize your value on that trade-in. And enterprise has done a very good job for us in doing so. It hovers around three to four, the three-to-four-year mark, that we really start looking at, hey, the market's very good for that type of vehicle, you should trade it in now, take that cash, reinvest it. It's given us a very consistent, budgetarily, a consistent amount each year in order to fund the fleet. Secondly, a lot of the maintenance costs, our maintenance costs went down because we have newer vehicles, and some of the larger maintenance is handled by enterprise versus in our in-house mechanic. And obviously, when we originally did this study, we also discovered the fuel usage would go down as well because you have a newer vehicle. Each generation's a little more efficient. So, it's been a phenomenal success for us, and it brought equity across the district. We have safe vehicles for both our students and for our employees.
Board, any questions or comments? Thank you for the clarification. Board, I would welcome a motion to accept action bids, contracts, agreements, 7.01 to 7.06.
So, move. Second.
A motion by Mr. Boyd, seconded by Mr. Babbitt. Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Dr. Yerkevich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Johan?
Yes.
Vote passes 7-0. Item 8.01 is the nomination of a delegate assembly representative, or the appointment of one, to represent Olathe at the Kansas Association of School Boards Conference in November, and we need to appoint a delegate as well as an alternate, and that assembly will take place, I believe it's on Saturday, during the conference. So, at this time, I would welcome nominations for the delegate assembly representative.
I nominate Becky Johan to be the delegate.
If there are no other nominations, I would accept a motion to cease nominations.
Move to cease nominations.
Second.
Motion to cease nominations by Brad Boyd, seconded by Julie Steele. Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yerkevich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Johan?
I guess that's yes.
Yes, ceasing nominations, yeah. Okay, then this vote is to then appoint Becky Johan, Johan. I keep changing that, don't I? Sorry. To this position.
I move to appoint Becky Johan as delegate to represent Olathe Public Schools at the 2024 Kansas Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly Meeting.
Second.
Appointment, motion by Will Babbitt, seconded by Claire Reagan. Mrs. Johan?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yerkevich?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Johan, for taking that position. Motion two, under 8.01, is for the alternate delegate, which that individual will receive the same information but only attend in the event the delegate is unable to attend. So, I would accept nominations for that position.
I nominate Claire Reagan.
Who is the second? No.
Move to cease nominations. I second that.
Move to cease nominations by Julie Steele, seconded by Becky Johan. Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Dr. Yerkevich?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Johan?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Reagan, for your willingness to serve. That was ceasing.
I move to appoint, it's very clunky, yeah, not your fault.
It is clunky.
I move to appoint Claire Reagan as our alternate delegate to represent Olathe Public Schools at the 2024 Kansas Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly Meetings.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Steele, seconded by Mr. Babbitt.
Nope. Boyd.
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 This guy. We look alike.
All right, let's get this over with. Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Dr. Yerkevich?
Yes.
Mrs. Johan?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Reagan. Item 8.02 are some board policy updates, and there was one policy, I believe it's J.K. Student Activities, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Pittman, who is speaking? Okay.
Looks like we're getting two blue suits to come up and talk to us about that this evening.
Yeah, how about that?
Good evening. So, was, I'm sorry, the question about.
A specific question. I'm sorry. Yes. So, policy J.K., as I understand it, is related to virtual students participating in student activities. And I wondered if you could clarify, because I know there are CAESIA eligibility requirements that are very specific, passing X number of courses each semester, whereas the language for the virtual student says making progress or making significant progress. So, how is that clarified, identified, what determined?
Correct. I'm going to point the finger at this gentleman over here. I think he could probably help with that better than I could.
On the making significant process, that refers to the current coursework that they're in. So, to take a regular ed student right now, or a student enrolled in our schools full-time, CAESIA says they have to have passed five classes the previous semester, and they have to be enrolled in five classes at this time. And with the Senate bill that was passed that allowed homeschool parochial, private school students to participate in athletics and activities at public schools, they put in the language of, for the homeschool kids, basically, because there isn't a governance or a check and balance for what the students might be doing in a homeschool. So, when the homeschool parent applies to be able to participate, they go through an application process on the CAESIA website. CAESIA contacts them, and they simply verify with the parent that the student is making process or progress towards the next grade, the next level, and there's not really a check to figure that out. Well, then, after a year of that, CAESIA added virtual students to that same umbrella of homeschool parochial and private school students. A parochial, private school student were able to check their transcripts where they go. Homeschool and virtual, a little more difficult, but once CAESIA gives that approval, then they're allowed to participate. So, it's, the progress is referring to what they're currently in, and I think previously, before all of this came to light, virtual school students had to follow a CAESIA process where they had to actually be enrolled part-time at the school to participate. The new language kind of allows that to not necessarily be the case. So, I, big word salad, I felt horrible. I don't think I explained that very well.
No.
But I hope that made sense.
So, CAESIA checks with the parent.
Right.
Is there documentation required, or it's just the parent essentially signs off there?
Pretty much is that. And then CAESIA alerts the school and says, "This student is approved to participate in your program. It is now the school's responsibility to verify the address." Because they might live in the Olathe South attendance area but attend Lawrence Virtual Public School. That doesn't mean they can go and play sports at Lawrence. They could only play those at Olathe South. It's based on your address and your residency, so.
Okay.
So, they would contact Olathe South and say, "This kid is eligible, but you have to verify the address."
All right. Board, any other? Mr. Boyd?
So, if I'm hearing this correctly, and, well, let me start over. Are there two different standards for students playing sports in Olathe?
I'm not sure I know what you're asking.
Okay. Let me try again.
Yeah. I might, but I might need a little bit more direction.
You know, obviously, I have kids in the district, so if my son is playing basketball at a high school in our district, could there, could he have teammates that aren't meeting the same criteria that he has to meet to play basketball?
Absolutely. It could happen that a student who is not a full-time student enrolled in Olathe School but passed the CAESIA requirement as a homeschool student to participate, that the homeschool education that student is getting isn't, there's a very difficult opportunity for us to verify what classes are being taken, what rigor it's at, what grades are being earned, and what level the student is attaining. We're going on the trust of CAESIA and the family to have provided that information. We don't have, and we also don't have an attendance policy. Like, we have students that attend our classes every day, and we ask that they be there so that they can participate. We don't keep attendance on homeschool students.
And this maybe isn't a question, but more of a statement, and don't feel any pressure to respond, but, so this Senate bill has created an environment where there's an unequal, in my opinion, an unequal playing field, where we're creating inequalities on the same team for different students.
It can certainly have that perception. I will say, last year as a whole, I think we had less than a dozen students total that were a part of this in our district. I think it's probably a little higher this year. And I know from, in talking with my athletic directors and school people that have worked with these kids, many of them have come in, very bright, very smart, very capable students, and so, you know, I think it's.
Sure, but that's not the measurement.
Right. So, there's, I think there's a lot of perception there that is on both sides of this argument.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Boyd, I would just follow up just briefly. You know, one of the things that Matt alluded to this, we have the ability, if a kiddo has attended a brick-and-mortar school or even a virtual school, typically most of them, to look at a transcript, look and see what they've done, and while And while homeschools, many of them are registered with the state of Kansas, our ability to do the same kind of thing is zero, really, which is much different, I think, to your point, than, you know, students that are enrolled at our district every day, where we know what it is that they're doing that way.
Sure, and this isn't something that we are taking upon ourselves to do. This is something that we are forced to do by state law.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And it is also not something that CACIA developed. It originated with the state government.
From the state legislature, from a bill that was passed.
Ms. Reagan?
So you said last year it was about a dozen kids?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact stats, but I do remember it was probably about four or five middle level students, sorry, and six or seven at the high school level over the course of the whole school year.
And even though we're putting this into board policy pending vote tonight, for virtual students, were the students who participated last school year virtual students, or were they homeschool students?
We did not have any virtual students last year that I remember. I could be wrong in that. I think we had, most of those were homeschool, and I think we had a couple parochial.
Okay.
And when I say parochial, I think there were a couple of middle school students that played middle school football with us, who their parochial school didn't have a football team. So they were, that's how they did that.
Is, and maybe you don't know this directly, kind of the tenor of what Brad was mentioning, I'm curious, is that, how is the dynamic of this? You know, you have these students, well, you have these young people who are not Olathe students coming and participating. Is it weird for the kids? I mean, is it, I mean, kids are kids, like, but it just, I'm curious, this dynamic, like, oh, who are you? You don't go to school here, and.
By every account I got, the situations we had last year all went very well for both the students that currently go here and the students that we welcomed in. That's how Olathe operates.
Yes, that's true.
We're going to take care of kids when they come to our door, and it really doesn't matter where they come from.
And the kids didn't make the policy.
No, and they're certainly, you know, welcome to follow it, so.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else?
So, Mr. Pittman, I would just say, our motion tonight to approve these policy changes are so that we are in compliance with state statute. It's not a statement of opinion on how we feel about changing policy.
That is accurate, yeah. The language, why I would like to take credit for this wonderful policy is the language, it's from the Kansas Association of School Boards, their model policy, that they push out updates twice a year, generally, in June, June and December, the June updates. More information you want to know, are a little more expansive because they usually cover laws that the legislature has passed and the governor signed in the law to begin, usually around August 1st. This is one of those. So the language in the statute, the language of the policy matches the statute.
Dr. Yerkes?
I would just mention quickly, you know, one of the things that the board will do this fall is to develop your legislative priorities for work in Topeka in the next session. One of the things that has traditionally been there is the idea of local control and locally elected school boards. And, you know, not to talk necessarily specifically about this, but, you know, one of the things that we often talk about in that is decisions that this board is making that you really don't have a choice whether or not you make that board. And some of the things that we could do locally, you could choose to do locally if you thought that was the best fit for our community, our students, and our schools. But this is, again, kind of an example of something that was legislatively driven on this board. And to Ms. Steele's point, it's not something you really have an option to say, yes, we'll follow that statute or not. But I just didn't want to miss the opportunity to say that that's one of our longstanding legislative priorities typically, is that idea of local control by locally elected boards of education.
I can also say, because I meant to mention, I know of at least two students last year who participated in athletics as a homeschool student who had such great experience, they enrolled in Olathe Schools for this year, so.
Mr. Babbitt?
Mr. Pittman?
Yes.
Which new law is this? Because there's a few in there. I just want to make sure for my reference and for anybody watching reference. You can also email me later if you don't.
Sorry, real fast. It is a House substitute for SB 387. So I have my glasses on, so if I can read it all right, but yeah.
Thank you.
That's what it is. Correct, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Johann?
Yes, so it says extracurricular activities. That includes other things outside of athletics, or is that correct? Can you explain more?
The way the law was written, it was supposed to apply, really, to things that happen after school and under the CACIA umbrella, so not all activities. But mainly athletics, cheer dance. I don't want to misspeak, but I think a few others. But I can't, what I can't remember as I sit here is if it included, like, debate, forensics, theater. Because I know we didn't have requests in those areas, so I'd have to double check. But it's the after school extracurricular.
And there's some differentiation, if I remember correctly, that, you know, some of the ones you just mentioned, debate, forensics, many of those are a course within the school day in our district as well. And that really is where the practice and preparation takes place.
So, absolutely.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for the clarification. So at this time, I would welcome a motion for board policy updates.
I move.
Ms. Steele?
You go. Go, girl. Okay, I say all the letters. I move to approve updated board policies, BCBK, JH and KK, and adoption of new policy IDACB as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Johann, seconded by Ms. Steele.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Johann?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero. Future action items, there is a long list, so please be certain to review those before our November meeting. There were also written items included in the agenda, the October Head Start Director's Report, Bond Issue Update, and Learning Services Report. And again, we thank those three organizations for that continued information to keep us updated. And then at this time, I would welcome any topics for discussion, board. Mr. Babbitt?
I had two topics I wanted to bring in this evening. The first was Dr. Yurkovich, and Becky and I attended the Mill Creek Campus a few weeks ago, and met a fantastic principal there that Nick just spoke about. It was a, it was an eye opening and fantastic experience. Mr. Schwerderman walked us through all the different programs, including Project Hope, where Nick was, as well as all of the other programs that take place there that there are more than I can count. But the SOAR program really stuck out to me, and it was, it was just, it was probably my favorite visit I've made as a school board member, just to see these students who don't necessarily fit in somewhere else having a fantastic time with their teachers and these teachers who just absolutely love what they're doing and would never do it anywhere else. We saw some beautiful murals being painted by a student in the hallways that, if you have a chance to stop by and see them, they are incredible. And just these programs being put together. We happened to be there on National Talk Like a Pirate Day. And we saw many teachers dressed up, and every teacher and student giving the principal guff because he was not dressed up, so he was going home over lunch to dress up. And it was, it was great. I just, I left there feeling energized and so happy to be part of this district, to see the resources and work put into these programs that very few other districts have, some that no other districts have. And it was, it was just so eye opening. And so I really appreciate the tour that they gave us and Dr. Yurkovich for putting it together. And it was, it was just great. I encourage anybody that has not been there to go take a tour. It was, it was great. The other one, thing I wanted to talk about is I went to the parent, parent, let me see, a parent presentation for the 21st Century Program, CTE, and all of the other programs that we have at the district. And it was so cool to see all these different programs, just booth after booth after booth set up, and all of the kids and parents going booth to booth, talking to all of these instructors and people that are so passionate about what they do. And it was just so neat to see all the different, various programs that the Olathe School has, from welding to engineering to management, to media relations, to, just everything was just so, so great to see. And there's so many options out there that if you have a kid in middle school, I very much encourage you guys to check it out and start going through there, because the application deadlines are coming up fast, I'm pretty sure. And I know that, I took my nine year old, and he went through a lot of them, and he already has decided which of the five he wants to try for. We'll, we'll see how that turns out. But it was a, it was a really great experience also, so that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Steele.
I wanted to draw your attention to something, and some of you may already know about it, but it was new to me. And it resulted from an invitation I received from our very own graduate, Komal Kaur, who started an organization called Eye of an Immigrant. And I was invited to give a welcome message at an event that they had that was kind of surrounded during welcoming week of having welcoming conversations. And it was such a joy to be there, and ended up randomly, there was a couple of Olathe educators there, had great conversations. But the highlight was Sunayi, who is the wife of Shrinow, who was killed in our community in 2017. There's an amazing documentary on YouTube, and it's called Do We Belong? It's so impactful. If you haven't seen it, I encourage you to go to YouTube and watch it. I'm hoping a program that she has started is something we might be able to fold into here in Olathe with our kids. I haven't had that conversation with you yet, but I'm going to. But it was, it was really so impactful. So I would encourage you to go watch that. Through these meetings that Nick Crowley mentioned, they are really amazing. Our staff is taking time outside of their contract date to speak to us about how they feel about working here in Olathe and things that we can be doing better, and things that they'd like to see us continue. So being with the staff so far of our OATC Center in Rolling Ridge, and Ridgeview, and Mill Creek Center, amazing conversations. I'm so thankful for the time with our educators to have raw, meaningful dialogue. It's, it's all built around retention, recruitment, and as we heard tonight from our HR team, we're very focused on it. It is a lift that is not being done anywhere else in our state. And the combination of an ONEA exec member, a BOE member, and a superintendent leadership team member is really unheard of. We've never done that here, and it's not being done anywhere. So we are committed, committed to the work. It's been super exciting to be a part of that. Site council, all districts I council this last week. I get so, almost like a weird parental, just so proud of our staff that lead amazing sessions during our site council. I popped in and out of several, and it really, it makes me so proud of our staff and the varied topics that they present on, and how professional they do that. The main topic of our site council is chronic absenteeism, something we're going to be working on this next year and in perpetuity. But it was a really great event. So thank you to everybody who made that happen. And lastly, the Wall of Honor Dinner last night, which we honored our people here today at the beginning of the meeting. I must say, so many accomplished people, so to be in the room with them. But I do have to shout out to Mr. Carney, who was my government teacher at Olathe North, and had so much to do with shaping me and my thoughts on local government and the importance of it. And he has a lot to do with why I'm sitting in this chair tonight. So shout out to him, and I was so thankful to be a part of that celebration last night. So that's all. Long winded, sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Boyd?
Thank you. I want to highlight market value assets, only because I have a senior in high school. And to hear the conversation between him and his friends about the opportunities they have to graduate from Olathe Schools and go earn real money is encouraging as a parent and as a father to know that when my son graduates, he has the ability, because of the opportunities afforded to him in our school district, to go out and sustain himself is really encouraging. And we make decisions up here, not really realizing the lifelong intent or the lifelong impact that those decisions can have. And I know market value assets was just changed at the state level and increased graduation requirements for 2028. But we were already headed that game to increase that here in our district. So a shout out to market value assets. The second one I have is, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. That's why I'm wearing a little bit of pink. So if it's in your heart to visit the National Breast Cancer Foundation, there are lots of resources and ways to educate yourself and to donate and to give. I lost my mom to breast cancer as a kid, so I'm in an area that has stayed near and dear to me. But again, if it's in your heart to go do that, the National Breast Cancer Foundation is out there for you to get some resources and to donate. That's all. Thank you.
Lots of great things going on around the district. So the Women's Giving Circle met earlier this week and got to award some very exciting grants in our need base cycle, rather than our innovation cycle. We meet twice a year. And I am just always impressed by the ideas that our educators have and bring to the table to make it better for our students. You know, all of those projects are very student centered, and it's very powerful. So I would definitely encourage people who are curious about it, check it out on the foundation's website. I've been a member for several years now, and it's just a really great way to build community with people you may not often spend time with. Just to echo, and not to echo, I'm going to say ditto mostly everything Mrs. Steele said about the district conversations that we've been having, not to be redundant, but the opportunity to listen and to allow educators the space to really use their voices, both spoken and in typing, and having the opportunity to share their candid thoughts anonymously if they like. It's, it's been a heavy lift, but worth every pound of work. And I look forward to going through the data and hearing those things. And I appreciate what Mr. Carley said about, you know, gratitude and energy and excitement, but also, not everyone shares that same vibe. And that's where we really want to dig in. And so I've appreciated the opportunity to be a part of the conversations I've been a part of, and I look forward to seeing many of you as the rest of the semester unfolds. And finally, our next meeting is not until after the 2024 election. You all knew it was coming. I was going to talk about this. So here's the, here's the thing. The entire Kansas Legislature is on the ballot, the entire legislature. A lot of people don't realize that. And the people who will be setting the next funding formula for public schools in Kansas will be elected this year on November 5th. And public education, public education is at the heart of our community. You talk to companies, you talk to people who are bringing families here, workers here, students here. It is our schools. They are a beacon. And they clearly keep bringing people back, as we have seen just from people leaving and coming and all of that. Your vote is powerful, and I've said it before, the top of the ballot, sure, very exciting. But the down ballot races are very important. And it is crucial that we, as voters, make sure the people who get our coveted, hard fought for vote are really standing for the reason why we live here. You know, I mean. You know, I mean, there are so many different issues out there. My issue is public education and standing with people who understand the power and importance of local control. Having a discussion up here where we really don't have a say in a policy because the people in Topeka have made a decision on our behalf, that's frustrating as a board member, and I'm speaking as myself. But, so just think about it, you know, talk to people who share your values about where they're falling, email candidates, figure out what's going on down the ballot, and then tell five people. Because if you're in this room, you, you are informed, you're here. If you're watching this, you are informed. It's the people in your life who are not able or, you know, in a spot where they can pay attention in the way that you do. So, voting is our superpower, and we need people in Topeka who are going to support the Foundation of Kansas, which are public schools, when we set that next funding formula. So, thank you so much.
Any other comments, board? Ms. Johann.
Sure. I just wait for everybody else to say something, and then I'll piggyback. I echo everything that Will said, I really enjoyed that visit, it was great. We had thought we would allot an hour, and I think we were there about two and a half, and it was just, I think we could have stayed there all day, honestly. Again, also Women's Giving Circle. But one of the things that stuck with me with my first dialogue session this week, because I am newer to the school arena and was the public perception of our educators. And so, listening to that, thinking about that, and then it hit me, I am one of the people of the public, right? Probably two years ago, I didn't have the same perception that I do right now, sitting right here and listening to the presentations that our, our teachers were giving at the Women's Giving Circle. A neighbor invited me to go to that, a neighbor invited me, and I met Julie, a neighbor invited me, and I met several other people that had been at the Women's Giving Circle. And so, I think it just takes one. You think about how that power can happen. I've invited a couple people to come with me, and then we've joined together and really learned and listened to hear what these teachers are doing for our children, and it's powerful, it's really amazing. So, I just wanted to say that because after I've listened a little bit just to some of the things that our educators and teachers and staff have to say, you know, one person can change a little bit and takes time, it's a, you know, a marathon, not a sprint. And so, I just really appreciate the input that I've gotten so far and looking forward to the rest.
Anyone else? Okay, I am going to be redundant about the dialogues because I think they are so valuable. And I so appreciate the partnership with ONEA and the senior leadership team as we work through those and board. I would, I would thank each of you because it is a heavy lift for seven of us to cover all of the sessions, and many of you are working, most of you are working full-time in addition, and so you're adjusting schedules, and some of the members of the board are doing two in a day so that we can cover them. But I, I think the information that we are going to glean from these conversations is going to be so powerful to continue the excellence in Olathe Public Schools. So, I, I am going to be redundant because I just think it's so important. Also, the district site council, I want to do a shout out to Dr. Reeves and Dr. Fluke for their opening session. That was so well-done and really laid the foundation, I think, for the breakout sessions, which I would agree, our staff who facilitated and presented in those sessions were, were very impressive. Also, a follow-up to Will's conversation about the CTE programs, the daytime event with the eighth graders attending and seeing our high school students as the presenters during those blocks of time. Again, you know, you see the fifth grade students from Briarwood tonight and the way that they presented themselves, and then you fast-forward six years, and those are our high school students doing the same thing and teaching our eighth graders about what those opportunities are. So, there's just a long list of things that have been happening already in September and October, and just this week has been a full week. But again, thanks to staff and to those who presented tonight, and we're going to get out of here early tonight, so. Dr. Yeager.
I have a long list this evening. Actually, it's, it's probably going to sound fairly redundant. I was also just going to mention site council, and certainly a great, huge thanks to all of our staff members that participated that way. But I also want to thank our staff members who came as participants and also our community members that came. You know, I, I've had some time this week to just process things from our district dialogues that I've been part of, and one of the things that I, that I recognize, and our administrators have heard me say this before, but when we have folks that step into those spaces who have not been into those spaces, by and large, what we're doing is creating ambassadors for our school district and for our staff and for the kids that attend school here. And the, the more that happens, the better it's going to get for, for all of us and everyone. I also really appreciate the district dialogue, you guys have done a great job of covering that, so I won't dig into that too deeply tonight. But I did want to remind everyone that our round of classified roundtables is happening right now as well. Our senior leaders have already begun meeting with our classified staff members, both to learn what, what's happening right now, share some things back out that have been done as a result of those meetings last year. But those are extremely valuable to us, and many of the things that have been said tonight about the district dialogues apply to those spaces as well, so I just did want to call that out tonight as well. Let's see here, the Alumni Association Wall of Honor, you know, I've been to that every year, and it is, it is so special, it really is. And, you know, I was struck last night, I never had the opportunity to meet Dr. Winters, who was our superintendent, for 23 years, and somebody mentioned last night that the district grew from about 4,000 kids, I think, to 15,000 kids during his tenure as superintendent. Dr. Banikowski shared that, you know, there was one year we opened three new schools, and, you know, I was fortunate to be in our district in the rapid growth time, but, you know, I just think about that and think about how much excitement that would have been and those kinds of things. But man, what a challenge from an operational standpoint as well, making all that happen. And I was also really struck because I, you know, see news, things that come across my email every day, and, you know, the average tenure for a superintendent in the United States is like 2.7 years. I mean, it's, it's appalling, frankly. And I just, I just thought to myself that, you know, for our district to have had someone who was a superintendent here for 23 years, and then Dr. Wimmer, who was here for a really long time after that, and then you look at the room last night, and Ruth Anne Hackler was there, who was on our board, who celebrated her 100th birthday, and, you know, if you think about just the legacy that this district has in teachers and educators and leaders and what have you, that at the end of the day, this district is built around people and relationships. And, you know, I, I love going to the district dialogues, I love being in buildings with our teachers and our staff. The reality is, though, that what we're doing is having conversations. And, you know, I think about where we've been since 2020 and what our world is experiencing even right now to some degree, and what I, in the seat I sit in, worry a little bit about with the presidential election coming up, that I think our district right now is modeling so much the power of conversation, getting to know each other, working together in so many ways, that I can't mention them all, but it's, it's really a special thing. And it really struck me last night that that really is the foundation of this school system, that that has been the way that we have worked for so long. Doesn't mean that we all have to agree, doesn't mean that we get it right all the time, but we're having a lot of conversations, and I think that's going to pay dividends in the long run, especially for the students that attend this school system. So, just some reflection of my own this week about that. It is National Principals Month. I hope every superintendent says we have the best of the best, and our principals are incredible. I do want to announce tonight that our principals in Olathe are truly the best. No other district has the best principals, we do here in Olathe. But, you know, you saw Andy Casper-Meyer tonight, and you see our principals each month when we do school spotlights, and, you know, again, none of them are exactly the same, but we have some really amazing, talented people in our district who pour their heart and souls in every day for our kids and our staff and our community, and I'm just so proud of them and so appreciate all that they do. It's also National High School Activities Month. One of the things that we pride ourselves in is the opportunities for our kids in our high schools, and it's important that we continue, as you all know, to focus on that. Wednesday was National Custodian and Maintenance Workers' Day. We have 6 million square feet of space in our district, that's a lot of space to take care of and maintain, and so appreciate our Operation Service Center staff, Travis and his team, but every single person that touches that work in our district, just to take care of this incredible asset that our community has built over time, is really an important thing for us as well. So, you know, it has truly felt this week, I say this oftentimes, but, you know, Andy tonight said the best school on earth or something to that effect. Like, this week has really felt like the best school district on earth, and I think we should all be really proud of that. So, anyway, those are my comments tonight, thank you.
Nineteen years to go, Brent.
Thank you, Mr. Babbitt.
Okay, there is not a need for an executive session this evening, so at this time, we will adjourn the meeting.